Folks, we do have a quorum, so let's go ahead and get started. It's 5:34. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent at this time.
Stacy, your audio cut out there for a second.
Councilmember Sander is absent at this time. Vice Mayor Budge?
Here.
Mayor Terry?
Here. Okay, looks like we have a quorum. We'll move on to the Metro Cable Television announcement, and I'll ask the city clerk to read the meeting video playback announcement, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air on Saturday, June 11th at 1:00 p.m. and Wednesday, June 15th at 11:00 p.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item three, which will be our Pledge of Allegiance. Without being able to see who is in the audience, I think I saw Darryl Langwell walking around before the meeting started. Is he actually in the audience still?
Yes.
Okay, great. Darryl, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then after that, I'd ask the audience and those at home to please remain standing. And we'll call upon Elizabeth Brick of the United Methodist Church for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And hi, Elizabeth. We see you in the room. Go ahead and you can-
Hi. Thanks for having me again. It's wonderful to be with all of you this evening. Please be with me in a spirit of prayer. God of grace and love, we give thanks for this beautiful day and for the gift of the rain that we received this last week. We ask your blessing upon this meeting tonight, upon those whom will be received as new employees and upon each and everyone who serves the community of Rancho Cordova. Tonight, we ask you to guide us to be attentive listeners, to be careful speakers, to be compassionate actors for all of the people in Rancho Cordova. May we serve with love in our hearts and with your love on our minds. We ask it in your many names. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. With that, we will move on to item five, or excuse me, two, five presentations, and we'll go to item 5.1, introduction of new employees. And it looks like we have quite a few. I guess we have a bit of a backlog on these from other readings that we've done lately. So I'm not sure who's going first. In my order on my agenda is Delisa is the first one to do intros. Does that sound right? Okay, so we'll start with Delisa, then Russ, then Stacy Delaney. No, I'm sorry, Stacy Leitner, then Stacy Delaney, then Edgar Medina. But Delisa, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Terry, council members. I am Delisa Verdun, Senior Customer Service Representative for the Neighborhood Services Division, and I wanted to introduce Shay Porter, who has been with us for a month and 19 days as of today, and we are pleased to have her.
Good evening, Mayor Terry, council members, thank you, and audience. I'm the newest customer service representative with Neighborhood Services. I assist with customer service inquiries, and I'm proud to serve the lovely citizens of Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome. Very excited.
If Delisa doesn't have another person, I think we're moving on to Russ. There we go.
Good evening, Mayor Terry and council members. Russ Ducharme, Neighborhood Services Manager, here to introduce our new homeless outreach navigator, Sharon Singh. Sharon comes to us through the Sacramento Self-Help Housing Contract and started her assignment here with the Homeless Outreach Team on March 25th. Sharon has a great deal of experience with social work and advocacy, and we are super excited to have her on our team.
Good afternoon, mayor and councilman. I'm excited for this new opportunity and willing to work with everybody.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. And Russ, if you don't have another one, I think we're moving on to our city clerk.
I'm coming down so Farzana doesn't have to stand down here by herself, but I am taller, so I need to raise the podium. I'm Stacy Leitner, city clerk and executive assistant, and I am here to welcome Farzana Qassar. She joined us at the end of February, 28th of February. She has joined our administrative support team, and we are very thrilled to have her. Many of you might have seen her sitting on the second floor at the reception desk there, just outside many of your council offices. And I would like her to just share a few words about herself so that you can get to know her.
Good evening, Donald Terry. Good evening, council members. I'm Farzana. Like Stacy said, I'm the admin assistant one on the second floor. I have been living in Sacramento County for over 25 years. I also worked for the county for eight years, and here I am part of the city of Rancho Cordova's great, devoted, enthusiastic, and fun-playing, workful team, and I am honored to be part of this team. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Delaney, I believe you're up next.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Stacy Delaney, and I'm representing the Community Enhancement and Investment Fund Team. And with me tonight is Lindsay Samples. She joined our team six weeks ago today, and I'm thrilled to have her. She came to us from West Sacramento, and prior to that worked for the city of Livermore. And some of the things I really enjoy about Lindsay is that she's truly passionate about the communities that she serves. She has a really fun personality, and she's diving right into everything grant-related in our world, so I'm pleased to present Lindsay.
Thank you, mayor and council, and for the kind words, Stacy. It took me since 2019 in multiple tries to apply for position at the city of Rancho Cordova, but to the family members who are listening at home, thank you for your support, and thank you for hiring me because I am motivated to do well for your community. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. And lastly, we have Edgar.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Edgar Medina, Public Works over Capitol Division and Transportation. I have the pleasure of introducing Drew Hart, our new senior transportation planner for Public Works. He comes for us from the city of Sacramento, and he's already, in the past three weeks, has developed a kind of rapport with the team and is coming up to speed on things rather quickly. With that, I'll pass him along.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's good to meet you all. It's good to be employed here at the city of Rancho Cordova. As Edgar said, I came here from the city of Sacramento for the past five years, part of their Public Works Department Transportation Planning Team, focusing on a lot of multimodal transportation and transportation safety plans that we hand off to our engineering counterparts for implementation. Before that, I worked for the Solano Transportation Authority. And I'm really grateful for the opportunity to work in a city that has so much going on and so many opportunities, and it seems like a great time to be part of the plan and vision of what's next to come for the city of Rancho Cordova. So glad to meet you all.
And so with that, we will finish presentations. We'll move on to public comments. So citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. If you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of your screen, or if you're on an iPad or an Apple device like I am, it's in the top right. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called upon by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and to state the name and community of residence. To state, excuse me, to state their name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. With that, I'll just go ahead and remind folks that are on Zoom, please raise your hand now. If you are on the phone, please hit star nine to raise your hand. And with that, I'll move to the city clerk, and we'll take public comment within the chambers.
We're going to start with Larry Ladd. He's here in the council chambers. Following Larry will be Helen Wayland-Bashaw.
Hey, guys. Larry Ladd, one of the co-founders of this fine city, resident of Sun River. And as you all know, I put in a couple decades in the US EPA-sponsored community advisory group for jet superfund side issues where we debate remediation and toxicology and stuff, and complain always that there's not enough outreach. So the last election cycle, I put in my personal findings in a candidate ballot statement just because it was durable and inexpensive way to get the word out. And I want to take the opportunity here to clarify a couple of things that wouldn't have fit in the editing for a candidate ballot statement. I stated in that with exposure to liquid rocket fuel, a red flag would be a child born with cancer in bone kidneys. The likelihood is it would be a girl because of the genetics. The driving force for the numbers for TCE and vapor intrusion, which is the primary identified problem, is fetal heart defects. There are many kinds of fetal heart defects. The best that I can read is, and I cited the study for you guys, is conundruncle and the subset that has to do with flexibility of heart valves. And finally, in terms of perchlorate, my hypothesis, specific for this area, is to look for adverse effects from B19 parvovirus because unlike any place else in the world, our perchlorate drinking water standard in a federal court is based on the risk of aplastic anemia at really high doses. And so that's my hypothesis to how that happened in the 1960s. And it's based on an anecdote for a worker at an oil and flare plant in Morgan Hill who had a child with Down's and died of leukemia. So that's what it's based on. And that's the end of my amendment to this statement, and you guys have a really good day.
Thanks, Larry.
Helen Wayland-Bashaw?
Hi, I'm Helen Wayland-Bashaw, and I live over in the Tiffany area. There's two areas I'd like to cover. I have concerns with some of the fast growth the city is doing, my opinion the city is doing. I question whether the people making the decisions actually understand the grassroots of this city. What rules are in place? What environmental issues are affecting what you're doing, whether it be state, local ordinances, and what type of information the contractors are putting forth? My experience with a particular contractor is they are not necessarily referencing the more stringent rules, and I feel that in some cases, the city might be just penciling it off because you've had a great communication with these developers. So I do hope that we make sure everybody understands all the rules and really looks at an issue. If you don't know it, then seek advice from somebody who does know the issues. Another issue that I have is I've seen all this asphalt being laid in the city of Rancho Cordova. My street got that new upgraded asphalt several years back, and within a short period of time, less than two years, it started fracturing. I've questioned various people about the asphalt. I even consulted an asphalt forensics person outside the city. And I don't think, I'd like to know what kind of guarantees or warranties the city gets with these projects because we're laying an awful lot of asphalt. If it goes the same way Tierra Grande Circle has gone, we're in for a real treat. We're going to be paying for more asphalt. So with that, I really think the city needs to look at their contracts and what kind of things do we have in place to go back and make sure we're getting what the taxpayers are paying for. Thank you. Oh, and I also support the banning of the big warehousing over in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the chambers?
No, there are no other speaker cards in the chambers.
Okay, so let's move over to Zoom, and it looks like whoever had their hand up, put it down, so we can move on from that. Sorry, colleagues, let me bring my agenda back up. And so with that, we'll move on to council reports, and our first council report will be by Councilmember Gatewood.
All right, so there's been a lot of things going on in the city of Rancho Cordova. I feel like everything's kind of on fire as the heat starts to come in, and then somehow rain shot up, which is just amazing. So first thing, I want to thank the Talagana Association. They had their first very big Founder's Day of, I guess, that community. And we happen to have one of the largest Talagana celebrations that happens in the city of Rancho Cordova called the the Festival of Flowers. Very excited about that. That seems to bring in lots and lots of our community, and it just shows how diverse our city is. I got to go there. I met the one of the heads of the Democratic Party that's helping out with that, and then I met the council general, and it was cool to see all these communities out there. I learned a little bit of Indian, but I'm not going to butcher it and make myself look foolish. Maybe I will. Maybe I will in a second. All right, I get a little braver. Also, I have now been appointed or elected, however you want to say it. I am now the head of the Cable Commission. It's an interesting body, and being that I'm the only nerd on there that understands actually what goes into cable and pulling into stuff and all the construction, it's interesting trying to pitch tech to people and be like, yeah, that doesn't make any sense. And we had this big, long fight with Comcast, and then they finally settled. So, you know, it's exciting to see it going in the right way. It's a way for us to have all the public channels going, and so it's something that I believe always should be necessary because you always need something. Like, they're the ones that do all the training of our students and put all the cool SIVA awards, and so it's just a great group. And they're always trying to do new things to try to engage the community, and when you can't afford really expensive TV, the public channels, we have like four of them in our community. And what's funny is there is such a need right now for employees that we actually had to raise our rates just to try to attract people to come work at the Cable Commission or at the different channels. So if you guys are looking for a job, have ever wanted to work on TV, there is so many. It's funny because the state and public people are arguing over employees right now, so it's funny watching them battle it out. And so we were we raised our, how much we pay people just to try to attract people because we're starting to run low on just employees to be able to maintain the free television. So so that's exciting. So now I'm on two boards, this one and the Library Commission, and so I'm hoping to help the city in any way I can, and let's see, is there anything else that I can really see this important? Nope, that's it. That's my report. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Garrett.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. One more thing. One more thing.
Go ahead.
Sorry, forgot this. Ah, so close. I'm going to steal it back. Went to Memorial Day. Happy Memorial to all my fallen soldiers. And you guys give the ultimate gift, and that's your life, to our community and our citizens, and I can't thank you enough. I think Rancho Cordova does a good job of showing how much it loves its soldiers by being one of the only facilities that I know in the area that actually built apartment complexes next to our city in Mather Village. And we have a long history of taking care of our vets, and we happen to be the only one. We now have a famous composer that composed our own piece that now we can play everyone for a ballad, and God bless the gentleman who has been at every one of those events because he's struggling with cancer, and I hope that when I first got here, he was the first one to ever pick on Linda Budge in public and Shelley, and it was hilarious watching them go back and forth and be like, and so is it Don, Linda?
Bob Burner.
Bob Burner, that's right. And Bob just-
Burns.
Burns. And he just laid into him, and it was hilarious, and I'm just sitting there cracking up as because, you know, he's a piece of Rancho as much as everything else, being there for 14 years doing the memorials. So thank you for the invite. It was great to see everybody out there, and thank you for all you give to our community. Now I'm done.
Okay, so with that, seeing that Councilwoman Pulapati is not here, next would be Councilmember Sander.
Thank you, colleagues. I apologize for not having video. I thought I would be back to City Hall in time, and I'm subject to detain somewhere else in my car, so this would not be a pretty sight in any case. But I do have an interesting report, and Garrett, that was Bazooka Bob Burns is one thing he used to be known as, a war hero of three wars. If you can figure out, if you can figure out what three. He is an absolutely remarkable human being who he and his family have given so much back to veterans in his post-service leadership. I can't remember Linda, if he retired as a colonel or lieutenant colonel.
He's an Army Lieutenant Colonel, which he never let all the Air Force guys in the audience forget.
Right. But I think he also served in the Marines or something. He had like, I think he's one of those dual-service guys.
Not sure.
Where he went back to another arm. But in any case, great, great guy. Okay, well, you know, the biggest event for me in the past couple of weeks was the Golden West Invitational Track Meet that just happened this past Saturday. You guys may have seen something about it on the news, but we had about 1,500 athletes here from all over the country. And our Rancho Cordova kids did great, I have to say, given the level of competition that happened. We took the events that I am involved in and coached. We took third in most of them, which I'm happy with that. People were coming from as far as England to participate in this meet. And as a matter of fact, there was one kid from England who ran a four-minute, seven-second mile at Cordova High, and we think that might be a track record. There's some consternation and debate among the track aficionados at Cordova High, but we'll figure that out. But in any case, four minutes, seven seconds. He had the potential of running under four minutes, but it was a very, very exciting weekend, and the beauty of it is to see, as you would like, say, 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock in the morning, hundreds of kids, you know, a thousand kids participating in all these events, all over those facilities, that the city has done so much to improve. It was a really remarkable thing, and people walk away from that saying very great things about Rancho Cordova, and hopefully filling a lot of hotel rooms and buying a lot of stuff while they're here. So that was a lot of fun. The funnier thing actually about that day, Saturday, and this says a lot about our city, where we've been and where we're going. There was a softball tournament going on at Mills on fields that the city built in conjunction with the school district. It was a pretty big softball tournament. So while we had 1,500 kids in attendance at a track meet, they had hundreds of girls playing softball. Meanwhile, at the pool that we paid to help renovate in Hagan Park, there was a huge swim meet going on.
Oh, my word.
With tents all over the place. There were the tents from the track people were mixing with the tents from the pool people. And then across the other side of the park, at the gazebo that we helped build in the park, the giant gazebo, there was a huge picnic going on with yet more tents and more people and more cars. And then to top it all off, what none of us saw coming, and we need to get better about our planning, Symphony de Oro Rancho Cordova, our own homegrown symphony, did a public free concert that afternoon at the Performing Arts Center, which we supported when the school district was seeking funds to build this. So what you see is the city's hand in all of these things, five different events happening at the same time in the same area. That, I suggest, is the future of Rancho Cordova, and that's what really excites me about this place because we're a place that has fun, brings people here, they have a great time. All of these opportunities for our kids who live here and our families who live here, it was just a very exciting day. And in contrast to that, I've also sat through Regional Sand Board Meeting, Seco Board Meeting, Transportation Board Meeting, National League of City meetings in the past two weeks, but nothing holds a candle to my five-event Saturday. So with that, thank you all very much. That's my report.
Thanks, David. Linda?
Yeah, I get it, David. I get it. Okay, so I would like to start by acknowledging that today is the 78th anniversary of D-Day. And while for a lot of people, at least 50% of the audience, it's probably not that big a deal, in reality, all of the people and their sacrifices on D-Day are responsible for the world that we have enjoyed for the last 78 years up until about the 24th of February this year. And we just need to never forget that and remember what we owe to them because, especially because, as David mentioned, Bob Burns is a representative of that generation. And so it's really important that we continue to honor them. As Garrett said, Memorial Day was lovely. I think a lot of us still miss doing it at the Veterans Plaza because there's nothing like seeing the bricks in person, seeing people lay their roses. But it was a terrific event. Garrett, the gentleman who was the composer was a gentleman named Jerry Brubaker. His selection is entitled Proudly They Served. And and a very moving address from a retired Army Sergeant Kelly Hughes. He was a retired medic, and it was difficult for him to it was difficult for him to deliver, and it was difficult for all of us to hear. So as David says, there have been a huge variety of meetings going on. This seems to be budget time at all the meetings that I attend. Garrett, you forgot the HCP where you chair, and that was a budget hearing. LAFCO was a budget hearing. Let's see, I think the SBTC JPA, I probably already talked about, and that was a budget hearing. There was time in between to attend the robot. It's been like three weeks since we met. So there was the robot competition, which strikes me as extremely bizarre. All these wonderful kids, bless their hearts, you know. They put their robots on the table, and they have to program their robots to knock the opponent robot off the table. Okay. And the more interesting thing was Positive Altitude, which is a STEM project of the California Capital Air Show. And oh, I forget the number of kids who actually won the right to get their first flying lesson. But the youngest was eight, and the oldest was 17, and there was something like at least a dozen kids who got a flying lesson simply because they had written an inspiring essay. We also attended the grand opening of Station 68 in Montalena, which has been a long time in coming, and was wonderfully attended. Everybody just really had the best time. A highlight in my family was graduation. We graduated another kid from Cordova High, so that leaves us only two more, one next year and one two years after that. And I want to close, I'm asking that we close the meeting in honor of two lovely ladies who were basically founding members of Rancho Cordova. One of them is a lady named Alice Talbot. Alice's husband, Lynn, owned for a good 40 or some odd years Cordova Rentals. If you think about the intersection of Folsom Boulevard and West La Loma, it was the second building in where there's now a tire store. And Cordova Rentals was a place- And Cordova Rentals was a place where you could rent absolutely anything from a bucket of cement to skis. Um, and then um and Alice, uh Lynn passed away quite some time ago. But um Alice has just recently passed away and then. A lovely lady who was probably the saint of the, the earth named Lois Hawks. And I know that um several people are laughing because they will remember her husband Doug, her late husband Doug. Who was uh an owner of the grapevine and Doug was one of the more. Interesting people that we have had in Ranch of Cordova over time. And he ran the uh ran the grapevine for a very long time. And um her sons are still here in the area and have written to us and have been at these meetings from time to time. So I would ask. That we adjourn tonight in the memory of these two ladies as well as. The kids in U-Valley, Texas and everywhere around the. Our country who have been suffering in the last couple of weeks. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Uh, so I've got down Alice Talbot, Lois Hawks and the children of U-Valley. For around the city. Thank you. Um. So with that, I'll, I'll try to be brief. Um, I am not. In person today because I am still at the US Conference of Mayors. This morning we uh inducted and elected and adopted resolutions for. Uh, the coming year. Congratulations to Mayor uh Sheevy of Reno, who not only just finished up hosting the US Conference of Mayors here. Um, but also was elected the new president of the US Conference of Mayors. And um, for those of you who are planning on going next year, it's going to be in Columbus, Ohio. And thereafter that it was announced, uh, I believe yesterday morning that the following year will be in Kansas City, Missouri. Um, a couple of the highlights for those of you who don't know, but uh Kate Wright, who had run Civic Well, previous to that was the local government commission. Uh, Executive Director. Uh, this last uh Yosemite Conference was her final one and she actually had her first conference as the new Exec Director of Climate Mayors. Here on uh Thursday and it was very well attended and it's great to see somebody from California running such a prestigious national organization as uh Climate Mayors. Um, there's some great conversations uh uh over the past week. Uh, some of the highlights to me was one was uh. Which was standing room only and probably the most well-attended session of this entire conference was the Built for Zero. Um, and what that means is the, the homeless Built for Zero. Campaign and strategy. Um, I know Garrett and I have talked about this a little bit, but the, the idea around the functional zero of. Homelessness in any given uh population is, do you have enough available beds to house? The, the count of homeless that you have in, in a given uh population uh within your community. Um, and the interesting thing, and I know we've talked about this a little bit, but I'll just kind of highlight it again and say that it's something that I think we should have some. Um, further conversations about, um, because we should be getting our point in time counts this week or next week. Uh, is I really believe there's an opportunity to have what we consider to be a functional zero for, for veteran homelessness in the city. Um, if we look at um uh the Veterans Village that we have in place now, the, the available land that. Um, that, that is surrounding that area that we may be eligible to work with. I know we've had some comments from the county as well. Um, around some funding areas that we might have. And so I think uh. One of the real doable things that we could do when it comes to homelessness, and this isn't going to address everyone's concerns and it's not going to address some of the. Impacts of homelessness, especially around blight and issues that we have on Folsom Boulevard and other areas. Um, but if we wanted to set out and actually do something that I think is accomplishable, we could end veteran homelessness in our city. And listening to what I heard, uh, I heard in this past week, there are a lot of cities that have been able to do that. Um, with, with, you know, reasonable amounts of funding and efforts. In some instances, it was. A six to twelve month process to identify enough units and get their veterans housed or identified for the housing that they had. Um, so some interesting things around there. Um. And I'm still getting my notes together, so I'll probably bring up some other things around the US Conference of Mayors uh at, at our next meeting. Uh, I did want to highlight that STA did have a meeting uh this past week. They uh. For those who don't know, the Executive Director and the CFO of STA, uh their last days are later this month. Uh, they did hire a new CEO that will start, I believe, next week. And they're in the process of hiring a CFO, but there's kind of a, a pretty um. Precipitous uh exodus of senior staff at STA. Uh, that's not much of a surprise considering the. The, the two tax measures that really fund their activities, or I guess it's one and they were trying to get a second one, but um are, are getting close to expiring. There's not really a whole lot there left to, to do. Um, I would highlight that, you know, not to campaign or anything, but for those of you who haven't voted, make sure to take a look at the uh Abandoned Vehicle Initiative that's on the ballot right now. Um, that is something that the city does use quite often. Um, and be aware of it. I know when. I believe when we discussed it last in our city council meeting and in uh STA, I was expecting it to be on the fall, but uh ballot, not this time, but it is on this ballot. Um, echoing what Linda said, yeah, I think the, the Station Sixty Eight Grand Opening was fantastic. It was very well attended for. If I remember, the middle of the week, it was like a Thursday morning or Friday morning. Uh, very, very surprised for that many people to show up, but hey, they're excited about their, their fire stations. And uh the Memorial Day event, I know a lot of us didn't get to attend that. And then a few of us did attend uh the luncheon afterwards that KP International and BJ over at KP International hosted for us. That was actually the, the second time in five years, five years ago. Uh, we honored the Korean War and we actually had the conflict come that, that time as well. Um, but it was great. They brought some additional staff. We had additional people that, that came and I think filled up three or four tables more. So it was a great event to, to attend. Um, and also like to give a shout out to my son and all of the Ranch Cordova Padres of the National League, I believe. Uh, that are at the Tournament of Champions right now. I haven't gotten a, a score update, but they are one of the, the top two teams from our city that are out competing in the Tournament of Champions and hopefully trying to bring back. Uh, a championship to our city. So good luck to the Padres and to the Diamondbacks, I believe, or the Rockies. I can't remember. Was the other team in that age group? Um, that may, oh no, the Giants. Was it the Giants, Garrett? It was the Gi, it was the Giants. There you go. Um, I know there are four teams in Rancho and two of them made it into the playoffs.
And the Nationals.
The Nationals, excuse me. Yeah, there's the Nationals. What? The National League or they were the Nationals?
Nationals is the name of the team.
It's not an act. Son. No, you're thinking of majors.
I know. Good job, Nationals.
Yeah, but that's the other team. Yeah, that's in the other age group. I'm not talking about that. But good luck to them too. Um, and with that, I've got my notes here for uh a journey in the memory. And with that, I will turn it, oh, and if I could just one other shout out, um, just looking at things I should have been reporting on in the last month or so. Um, but because of habit, or I'm sorry, be, because of um cap to cap and coming home with COVID, I know we had a lot of staff covering. Bicycle events last month, IFEST and a lot of other things that I was really hoping to get to go to and get to come back to these meetings and. Say how great they were to be at and how great it was to attend them and to see people in person. Uh, and I was stuck home with COVID, so thank you Cyrus and staff and everybody else that I know covered those on our behalf and Linda as well for attending a lot of those things. Um, and even some things later on this week that I think you're covering for me because I can't be available. So um, thank you very much. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. Uh, speaking of uh the bike events, we had the last event uh with. A group ride from some city staff members. We also had um, uh, I participated in a, in a ride organized by Saba. Uh, very successful ride and they had a variety of riders from throughout the region. Uh, we also had, I think, one meeting that I noticed had been, not been mentioned is uh we had a two by two with Sax City Unified School District. And we talked about a variety of issues, um, uh mainly their budget and uh, and given the tragedy in Texas, we also talked about school safety and uh. And the partnership between the school district and the city and what the, what we can do to help to keep our schools safe. And lastly, um, I uh was invited to uh participate in a meeting uh last week with Vince. And we talked about a whole range of issues and uh challenges in the community. Great discussion we had. And uh we uh shared information, talked about ideas where how we can work with members of our community to uh. And not only improve our community, but also find solutions to some of uh the big problems that region faces, including homelessness. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. So with that, we will move on to, excuse me, uh. Usually I have these all printed out, but I don't today. Um, to our consent calendar items and consent calendar items consist of matters demeritined and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of council wishes to pull an, an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Um, so first, before I ask to have anything pulled, uh, I'll ask the city clerk, do we have any public comments on anything on the calendar?
We have a public comment that was submitted via email for nine point eighteen and I see a hand raised in Zoom.
Okay, uh, I'm assuming we have no comment cards in the audience, correct?
No comment cards.
Okay, uh, we can go ahead. We have Marissa and Eldon. Um, I'm, I'm just going to remind everybody that's going to ask to comment on the uh. Consent calendar item. These are, these are things that have already been voted on or given direction by staff. Um, so we don't necessarily need additional direction here, but we'll go ahead and take comments if we have them. Um, but before we take the public comments, uh, councilmembers, are there any items on the jet or on the calendar that you'd like to pull for comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to pull nine point seven. And.
Okay, anything else? That's it?
Uh. Is nine ten the one that keeps the, the distance ones?
I, I, I don't know what your question is.
Nine point seven.
Okay.
And yes, Garrett, you're right. It also raises the remote meetings.
Okay, so we're, we're pulling nine point seven. Let's go ahead and take public comment.
Marissa, I'm gonna start with you and uh this is Marissa Greenband. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you so much. Um, good evening, everybody. This is Marissa. I'm the Director of Tobacco Control Programs at Breathe California Sacramento Region. And I chair the Policy Task Force for the Greater Sacramento Smoke and Tobacco Free Coalition. Um, calling in tonight quickly, just on behalf of the entire coalition to thank Mayor Terry, Vice Mayor Budge and all the council members for. Your continued leadership um in tobacco control issues. We sincerely appreciate all the hard work of the city staff members too. Um, so thank you to the city's leadership for just continuing to prioritize health and well-being of Ranch of Cordova's residents, um, especially children and future generations to come. Uh, we look forward to continued work with the city of Ranch of Cordova. Um, so again, on behalf of the coalition, thanks so much.
Thank you. And that comment was on item nine point eighteen. Eldon, you'll be next to speak. And Eldon, if you could, uh, say your full name and uh what item you're commenting on.
Eldon Price, nine eighteen.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I, I want to bring up, I, I go to all the city council meetings about this all over because we have multiple retail units. Um, I know it's up for vote. Um, one thing I want to say is uh. Some, some, some towns have asked this to vote, but they've also took the time to extend it to go into effect until December. Uh, because we have a nationwide vote on it or statewide vote on it in November. And I, and I think that would be good well, really, because it's really damaging us retailers. Um, financially and the reality for us is it's just moving over to the next town or county. Um, all the sales and it's real damaging for us as retailers. We're, we've lost about. Through COVID, we lost about forty percent of our business. Now we're adding to that. We're really having struggles with affording the employees we need. Um, and, and we're taking this revenue away from us. We're, really, I'm just asking that we wait till November. When the state's going to pass it, we all know it's going to pass it instead of driving business to another town. Because to me, that's, I feel what we're doing. And that's really all I have.
Thank you, Eldon.
The.
Okay.
The last public comment that I have, um, Mayor Terry was submitted via uh email and it was from Thomas Lawton. That's been distributed to the city council and staff as well as made available to the public on the website and in the back of the uh council chambers.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I've got um a request to pull nine point seven. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of, or, or to move the rest of the calendar?
I will move approval of items nine point one through nine point six and nine point eight through nine point twenty.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Budget, second by Sander. Sorry, Garrett, did you say something? Because your mic wasn't on. I think I picked it up on somebody else. Okay, you're good? All right. Uh, with that, we'll have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulopati is absent. Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay, so with that, uh.
I'm gonna remove myself at this point because I have um dealings of business with this um contractor.
Oh, okay. Um, so we don't necessarily have a request or a question there. So if somebody can let me know when Garrett is not in the room, we'll go ahead and take that item.
Sure, I will.
Wait, wait, wait. Linda, he's not, he's not gone yet.
Was that a door?
I think so. Okay, we're good. Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, I will move approval of item nine point seven.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Budget, second by Sander. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood has recused himself. Councilmember Pulopati is absent. Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Somebody go get our council member, tell him to come back. Hopefully he can, he's with an earshot of TV. Uh, with that, we will move on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters demeritined and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member can, uh, uh, excuse me, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. So first I'll ask, do we have any public comment on the consent public hearing calendar?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for items on the consent public hearing calendar.
Okay, I'm gonna just check one time for Zoom.
Mr. Mayor.
I've not seen any hands. I will warn people now, this is your chance. If you have a comment on the calendar, on the consent calendar item. Items. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Do we have anything we need to pull?
Adam had a co, had a comment.
Um, Mr. Mayor, this is.
Go ahead, or city attorney, excuse me.
Thank you. Um. Um, Mr. Gatewood, could I ask you to step out uh for just a moment, please, again?
And he's out.
Um, I believe that was a door shutting. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to do this to the council, but um, uh, that was the first I, I was aware of a potential conflict involving um Mr. Gatewood and. Um, uh, because this is a particular contract for services, it potentially raises government code section ten ninety. I'm speaking of uh consent calendar item number seven. It potentially raises government code section ten ninety rather than Fair Political Practices Commission. Um, FPPC Fair Political Practices Act conflicts. So this does, as the council knows, will require a, a more specific kind of scrutiny.
Are you asking for us to rescind an action?
I, I am asking you for you to rescind that action for us to continue.
We would, so my, my assumption, correct me if I'm wrong here, uh, Mr. City Attorney. Is we would need to entertain a motion for reconsideration.
From a member who voted in, in favor of that, that action, which was all of you. So if you could.
Right, well, I, 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 hang on, I just.
I'm not following. I'm sorry, Adam, I'm not following the.
Hang on, well, hang on, hang on. So let me, let me ask the question to make sure that we're all following it too. So nine point seven, there could be a concern beyond of, of political practices. Issue of a conflict of interest and it may be a government contracting code conflict of interest. So the city attorney is asking us to rescind action on nine point seven. I'm asking from a parliament, from a. Parliamentarian standpoint, we would need to first have a motion to reconsider with a unanimous vote there. And then a second vote to continue the item to a date uncertain for staff to do additional research.
Uh, y, 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 yes, you would, you would, you would, you would be a motion to reconsider followed by a motion to uh, to rescind. And then we would continue the item.
So, Adam, then you're not really sure whether there's a conflict for others or not, but you just want to research it?
No, 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 no. What it is is, um, uh, this is in very simple terms, he, he um expressed. Um, just a, a moment ago, a conflict on a contract, not on a project. So because it is an FPPC, uh, because it's a ten ninety conflict, not a. So because it is an FPPC, uh, because it's a ten ninety conflict, not a, not a Political Reform Act conflict. Um, the uh, recusal is not always the answer.
Issue.
Um, um, so, so I'm sorry, uh, I, again, I, I, uh, even when he asked to continue the item, I think I, like the, the mayor, were, were not of the understanding that, that he was asking to postpone its action because of a conflict. So, um, so in, in the, in, in order to be sure that we can find um, that there may be an applicable non-interest or remote interest exception, um, that would allow the council to proceed with uh, action on this item. But, but I would not want you to have approved the item tonight.
Yeah.
Um, absent completing that analysis.
Then I will move, we reconsider item nine point seven.
Okay, so I have a motion to reconsider nine point seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a, a motion and a, a motion by Budge, a second by Sander for a reconsideration of nine point seven. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Gatewood has recused himself from this item. Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay, with that, I.
I will, that we can, uh, continue item nine point seven to a date uncertain.
It would be.
Wait, wait, hang on, hang on, hang on. I, I got it, Adam. So we will need a motion to rescind our previous action and continue it to a date uncertain.
So moved.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Budge. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Budge, a second by Sander. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Gatewood has recused himself from this item. Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay. So I, thank, thank you, Adam, and thank you for catching that before we had to do that at a following meeting.
Thank you.
Not that that wasn't cumbersome enough. Um, so with that, we'll ask Councilmember Gatewood to come back into the room. And when we know that has happened. Okay, I see him walking by. Um, I think we had dispensed with public comments. I don't think we had any on this calendar. Uh, do we have anything that needs to be, colleagues, do we have anything that needs to be pulled from the uh, calendar?
We just need to open and close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we will open the public hearing. I don't have a gavel in my hotel room. Sorry about that.
Black back.
We don't have any public comments as far as I understood. Um, do we have any comments or anything that needs to be pulled, colleagues?
No.
You're not, hearing not have a close the public hearing and entertain.
And I will move approval of the consent public hearing items ten point one through ten point six.
Thank you. I have a motion by Budge. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Budge, a second by Gatewood. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Thank you. Looks like our calendars agree too. Um, we do not have any public hearing items. Uh, so we'll move on to our regular calendar, calendar items. And we will start with item twelve point one. Uh, presentation of final proposed spending plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three for Measure H, Measure R, and American Rescue Plan Act funds. And I'm gonna call on Kim Duran, who is probably somewhere in there.
In the ether. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, Council, Kim Duran Caragorgio, Administrative Services Director. And uh, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide a comprehensive recap of all the prior council discussions that have occurred on American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds, Measure H and Measure R. To date, there have been a total of eight separate conversations over the course of the past six months to develop the expenditure plans that are before you to review this evening. And just as a reminder, for those who may not be familiar with the city's budget process, uh, the city did adopt a two-year bud, operating budget in spring of twenty twenty-one. So this discussion this evening is focused only on new sources of revenue, the ARPA funds, uh, not anticipated in the budget, and also the two voter-approved sales tax measures, Measure H and Measure R, which are reviewed and discussed annually. So as a reminder, there is a total of thirty-eight point three million dollars in funding under review this evening. And while not all of this needs to be spent or will be spent next fiscal year, the goal is to put in place an appropriation plan that will allow for new programs and projects to begin moving forward. Uh, so as a recap, uh, the city will receive fifteen point five million dollars from, of American Rescue Plan Act funding, uh, which needs to be finalized by twenty twenty-four and spent by twenty twenty-six. And anticipated revenues for both Measure H and Measure R are, are going to be eleven point four million for this upcoming fiscal year. So I'm going to start off tonight's review with a summary slide by major category that shows the amount of funds allocated by each of the three funding sources being discussed this evening. And then the subsequent, subsequent sides that I will go over will dive into specific projects and programs that are covered under each category. Um, in addition, as we move into those, we have representatives from each of the departments available for questions uh, from the council as we work our way through. So just to kind of highlight, um, as I already stated, uh, some of these categories are uh, from previous Measure H and Measure R discussions as well as ARPA and a total of thirty-eight point three million across the board for all three. So starting uh, first with the COVID nineteen response and recovery, economic development and community development bucket. Uh, just kind of walking through this slide, the first item is a continuation of workforce development efforts being coordinated by our Economic Development Department. Uh, with the bulk of this funding coming from the American Rescue Plan Act for this upcoming fiscal year, as well as a continuing allocation of Measure R. Uh, next item is continuing business support, uh, items also coming from three million dollars coming from American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, continued funding for property acquisition and redevelopment activities throughout the city of three point six million coming out of Measure R. Economic development incentive programs and jobs and talent program, four hundred thousand dollars in Measure H. Next item is economic development market feasibility analysis, uh, which is a set aside to specifically look at our business park and ensure that it is well positioned for, to remain competitive into the future. Hundred thousand dollars out of Measure H. A hundred fifty thousand dollar allocation for city placemaking and branding. Continuing uh, community building projects, community service activities and beautification projects. Uh, we have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars coming from Measure H and an additional half million dollars coming out of Measure R to uh, provide additional funds and augment many of those programs. Next item uh, is a progress, in-progress uh, item. Commitment was made previously to the food locker for capacity building of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then the final item in this category is continuing nonprofit support uh, related to COVID nineteen recovery and support of half million dollars. And so again, this, that item is focused specifically on COVID nineteen recovery for nonprofits in the community. So the total amount uh, coming out of the bucket for uh, COVID nineteen across the board is just under ten million dollars um, for next fiscal year. So before I move on, I'll stop and see if there are any questions.
Council, any questions for staff so far? Doesn't sound like it, Kim. Go ahead.
Okay. So continuing on to the next category, affordable housing homelessness and assistance to households. Uh, just to run through what is included in this category, the first item uh, is neighborhood services homeless enhancements. Uh, these were presented previously to the council earlier in the spring. So a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars would be coming from the American Rescue Plan Act and six hundred and seventy thousand coming from Measure H. The next item uh, is a two million dollar commitment to Phase Four of Mather Veterans Village, which would be matched by two million dollars from the county's ARPA funds. The next item is a million dollar commitment to the crossings that would bury Phase Two. Next item is small site homeless housing program of three hundred thousand dollars. This is a multi-year commitment. Uh, anticipated to occur over the next four years. And then the final category is childcare support and assistance at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that program, uh, staff is working on developing what that might look like and so more information will be forthcoming.
Um, Kim, I, I would just make one comment on the two million for Veterans Village, and I know I just brought up talking about veteran homelessness and I obviously would be a proponent of that, but we've talked about multiple veteran projects that may take the form, may take some sort of form in that area. And I'm just wondering if we, as this comes back for a final approval at some point, um, that we might think about a broader definition or description of what those funds may be used for than just saying Veteran Village cause we've talked about VFW, we've talked about um, a Fisher House and a handful of other things. A museum has even come up at one point. Um, and so I would just say that maybe we want that, that word to be a little bit more flexible in what, what we ultimately are allowed to do with it and how quickly we can fund it. Cyrus, I don't know if you wanna weigh in there, but I know we've had some discussions around probably four or five ideas that are veteran-related that wouldn't necessarily take the form of Veterans Village as the first project.
Yeah, I'd be happy to chime in. This is uh, I, I don't see a problem with council uh, giving us that direction. In discussions with Sacramento County Supervisor Don Notoli, his intentions are to provide uh, funding, the two million dollar funding from the county for any uh, type of homeless uh, housing support. Um, but I think he's also uh, comfortable and flexible with the use of the funds in, in the best manner possible. So we could uh, receive the direction from the council tonight and explore different options. And in discussions with the county, bring forth the best uh, project that we can think of for that location.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, to me, like, the wording gave me something like Veteran Village projects. Something as simple, as simple as that, and then let's identify, you know, if there's special grant funding for a Fisher House, maybe that's first. Or there's special funding for a VFW, then maybe that's first. It just depends on kind of, uh, because a lot of these are ARPA funds, they gotta be spent on a certain amount of time. I think whatever's the first best thing we can do is what we wanna use it for. So just don't wanna back us into ourselves into a corner with wording here.
So I raised my hand.
Go ahead, Linda. Sorry, I can't see hands at all. Just that, just the screen.
Oh, okay. All right. So then I'll take my hand down.
No worry.
No point in waving a flag if nobody can see it.
No, yeah, I can't see it on this end.
Okay, so um, um, combining what you said originally and um, what you just said, um, maybe we should just call that Veteran Service Projects because I was gonna, I was gonna say rather than just saying um, Veterans Museum, the county has talked about a Veteran Service Center and we've talked about um, um, wanting to provide uh, kind of like a location for the VFW or um, somebody like that as well as a museum, as well as a place that the county would have a Veterans Resource Officer. So.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Yeah, I, I think you just.
Like you said.
Another project that could be, yeah.
Yeah, like you said, let's just broaden the category. So if it turns, whether it turns out to be housing or whatever, we've gathered it all up under one umbrella.
Yeah, I just don't wanna back ourselves into a corner. I think, I think we're all.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
If, Mr. May, if I may, uh, we are, we are in some discussions with the county also related to the land acquisition. So there may be some specificity to uh, the location of the future phase of um, Mather Veterans Village. So I just wanna be sure that we don't um, uh, go back on our initial and high-level agreement with the county on the use of their two million dollar funds.
Yeah, and I didn't even wanna get into, to, to the land side of, of that conversation, even in my comments earlier tonight. Um, but you're right. And, and yeah, I, I don't know which one, which project will, will necessarily become first, but I know we've all made a commitment around projects that, that we aspire to get done and depending on the funding and what's available, it, it could be housing, it could be museum, it could be VFW, there's a whole bunch of things that are there. And I just think let's, I'm trying to, I guess, what I'm, what, what I'm trying to do, and I think what I heard Linda tried to do, um, is give staff the flexibility to bring us the best project that meets the timelines that we need to, especially for the federal funds.
Absolutely. And, and not only that, but um, Cyrus, to your point, to make sure that um, at least uh, two of the three locations that have been discussed could be included in that.
Yeah, agreed. I think we're on your side, Cyrus, here. I think it's just that, I get all the conversations we've had with the county, but I think in general, I just wanna give you as much flexibility as you need to be, and I, I'd hate for us to miss some opportunity because you gotta agendize to change something from budgeted for Veterans Village to budgeted for other veteran project. That's all.
No, that would work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Kim, keep going if you need to.
Thank you. Uh, so moving on to the next category, public safety enhancements. Some, the Measure H uh, allocation has provided funding for enhancements to public safety since inception. Uh, this is in addition to the twenty-five million dollars that the city already contributes from the general fund for uh, contract police services. So going down this list, uh, the first item is continuation of the crime suppression unit at one two, one point two five million. The next item is what is referred to as the Foz Officer, Folsom, Olson and Zimfandel, uh, someone focused on that area at two, just under two hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, a youth center officer as well as continuation of some of the student award programs uh, that many of you are familiar with, three hundred and nineteen thousand. And uh, an annual allocation for shot spotter technology of three hundred thousand dollars for a total commitment of two point one five million for public safety. Any questions on that before I move on?
Thought our last conversation was that we wanted to put, and I'm, maybe I'm sorry I missed this, uh, just been in traveling. I thought we wanted to put shot spotter into the general fund contract, not Measure H. Was that just me not remembering that right, colleagues, or did anybody else feel the same? If I'm the only one that did, then I'll leave it alone.
Mr. May, if, if I may, I think the direction from the council was uh, the initial recommendation or proposal was to use uh, ARPA funds. And uh, I believe the um, recommendation or the request from the council was not to use ARPA funds. We do have a s, public safety budget in Measure H and this, uh, the funding for shot spotter comes from that bucket.
Yeah, I guess. It was they, we didn't wanna use ARPA funds on it, but we want, it was okay to move to H.
Well, well, hang on. Well, I'm just wanna clarify what my position was. That's yours, Garrett, that's fine. My position was, I didn't wanna come out of ARPA funds and I didn't want it coming out of any of the special measures either. I wanted it to be in our, in our contract. Our annual contract that we adopt with the budget for the police. I, I don't wanna nickel and dime that co, I mean, it's the, it's the biggest thing we spend money on. We should be able to figure out how to accommodate three hundred grand in there. So, again, that's just my two cents, but I, 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 I was not saying move it from ARPA into H. I was saying get it out of ARPA. That doesn't mean move it to H. I, if, am I the only one that feels like that? If I am, then I'll leave it at that. But that was not my intention to do this.
Personally, I have no recollection of that.
Garrett, you sound fine with it?
I'm, I'm, if you wanna move it to the general fund, I'm fine with that as well. I mean, we can.
I, my, my, I guess my, my, whether this is CDPG or it's here, like, this is core services of the city. And I get, we've gotten used to doing the crime suppression unit, but like, who's to say in two years if we have a, a dip that, like, like, these officer positions, again, and I don't recall seeing that either, but I don't understand why we're taking these from special tax measure funds when we have a surplus in the general fund. So, like, why are, I mean, I don't know. I, I'm not a fan of using, using one-time funds or special funds for ongoing positions. I mean, we're hiring a youth, a youth center officer for a youth center that's gonna open this year and be open forever. So shouldn't that just be in the, in the general contract? Or can we not accommodate it, Cyrus?
Well, I think, you know, council, you have to be mindful that we're funding new programs and projects. And I, at some point, we may run into a capacity issue uh, in our general fund. I think the idea was that our uh, regular services will be um, uh, used. Uh, we, general fund would be used for our regular services, but some, some of the additional augmented services, we may have to utilize uh, uh, Measure H. I think the council has given us uh, a portion of Measure H funds to put in public safety. I think that I, we, we were not under the impression that the amount of uh, funds coming from uh, Measure H is zero for public safety. I think that I, we were not under the impression that the amount of uh funds coming from uh Measure H is zero for public safety.
No, and I, and I, I guess I'm not saying that. I think we've gotten used to the 1.2 million coming out of that amount. But you just added 800,000 or so back in. And to me, for a contract that's probably, I I don't have it in front of me today, but I'm guessing it's 16, 17 million dollars that adding 800 grand isn't beyond the realm of possibilities. But again, if I'm the only one that feels that way, I I will leave this alone. I'll bring it up in the next strategic plan, and I'll just be on record that I'd like to see more of these things get put into the contract and not be part of special funds. And again, my, my beef with having it with ARPA was I think there are more COVID-related things we can do with that than that, in my opinion. Uh, but I, I guess it was misinterpreted that that could then come out of Measure H. And I will say specifically that we had said that we were using Measure R for economic development and COVID recovery and then infrastructure. And so that should be public safety, because we didn't sell that we were going to use it for public safety.
So let's, let's remember that um we have residents who have talked to government about the fact that one of the main goals that they understood in Measure H was to enhance public safety. And so logically, just as, as Kim has listed them, each one of the, of those four items is an enhancement to public safety, which logically could come out of Measure H.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not saying we can't do it. I'm just saying I prefer not to. But again, I'm only one. Linda, it sounded like you were fine with it. Garrett, David, if you want to weigh in, like, if if nobody else has a beef with this, we can just leave it. I just that, that was my, maybe me not giving, you know, clear direction, but I'm giving it now. And I will just say that in the future, it's something that I'll be paying attention to.
Hey, I share your overall uh concern, Donald. I'm not sure I would apply it in this particular case. I don't like sort of the budget creep into the enhancement funds, if it's not an enhancement. But in this case, it kind of feels like an experiment. We're about to hear about another agenda here. But it feels a little bit like an experiment, like an enhancement, like something we might not continue doing, depending on how it works out, uh, what our experience with it is. So I think I'm comfortable calling this enhancement. But something that, you know, would sort of continue on in perpetuity, no matter what we do, uh, that probably is not an enhancement. So I agree with you on that point.
Okay, all right. Well, and I think that that kind of paints the picture as far as that we don't have three of us that have a beef with it at the moment um in the way that it is. And I actually kind of appreciate, David, your interpretation that in in some ways I would say the Foz, the Foz Officer, boy, that's not easy to say, and the ShotSpotter, I would say are fairly experimental. Uh, that youth officer is something we, we're going to have to keep planning to to pay for. So I would just, I would ask staff that as we look at surpluses or in general what the budget looks like, that things like that, that we expect that in perpetuity, we're going to be paying for, that we figure out how that doesn't come out of special tax funds, that that comes out of the general fund. Um, okay. Kim, did you have more to cover?
I do have continuing slides. If everybody's okay, moving on from public safety.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so the next category is Public Works Infrastructure and Maintenance. So just to walk through this list, uh, the first item, Mills Ranch, Rossmore Neighborhood Streets Rehabilitation Program or Project, uh, $4 million for that coming out of Measure R. Uh, next item is Corridor Beautification Study, uh, with a portion of that being focused on Mather Field Road. At $700,000 out of Measure R. Storm Drain Improvements to Monier Circle, uh, which will provide relief to businesses in that area of $2 million and per count, previous council direction. Uh, this was an expenditure that was made already this fiscal year. So those ARPA funds can be applied to that. The next item on this category is broadband and public Wi-Fi of half million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act. Pavement Rehabilitation, $574,000 out of Measure H. Enhanced litter and graffiti abatement, $200,000 also out of Measure H. Enhanced the city's urban forest, $200,000 out of Measure H. Sidewalk repair, $200,000 out of Measure H. Mather Field Road Corridor Enhancements, uh, funding, half million dollars of funding coming from ARPA, as well as half million dollars coming from Measure H for that project. Pedestrian improvements in the countryside neighborhood of $917,000 coming out of the American Rescue Plan Act. And then finally, $150,000 for intersection safety improvements from Measure H. So a total commitment across the board of uh just under, just around $10 million for infrastructure.
Wonder.
Any questions before I move on from that slide? Great. So continuing to move forward, uh, this next category, Assistance to Impacted Households and Communities. So this was previously discussed during some of the ARPA discussions. But the recommendation here is to set aside $2.5 million of ARPA funds uh to work through a community input process to determine how those funds are spent. And so just to kind of a reminder of what some of the eligible areas uh in the ARPA guidance would be the creation of Neighborhood Greens or Community Gardens, expansion of Good Neighbor Programs that would help more households in the community, pedestrian improvements to promote neighborhood walkability, and other strategic acquisitions and projects that promote improved health outcomes in certain neighborhoods. And so one of the criteria um outlined in the guidance was for those eligible neighborhoods to be within the Qualified Census Tract. So the recommendation is to set aside that $2.5 million and to begin a community input process in the fall uh to determine the best way for those funds to be spent. There are no questions. I'll move on to the next category, uh, capital investment and legacy projects. So the first item on here is the million dollars for annual appropriation for the uh operation of the Ranch of Cordova Youth Center, which is slated to open in fall of 2022, as well as an additional set aside of about $3.5 million for Little League, 2.7 of that coming out of Measure H, and just under 800,000 coming out of Measure R, uh, which will bring the total project set aside for Little League to $11 million. And then finally, last category, Community Grants. Uh, this is all funded out of the Measure H, H bucket, uh, broken into sort of three categories. The first being Arts, Culture, History, Entertainment, and Sports, uh, 1.1 million dollars uh going towards those programs. Education is $818,000, and other community service programs and projects of $766,000 for just under 2.7 million out of next year's uh Measure H allocation. Uh, in addition, uh, $954,000 of community grants um that were brought forward will also be funded out of this year's uh Measure H additional revenues that are anticipated. So uh for a total of uh just under $3.7 million there. So that brings me to the end uh of the review of the expenditure plan for those three funding sources. I'm happy to take any additional input that we haven't already heard. Otherwise, the plan is to return at the next council meeting on June 20th to bring forward the appropriation resolutions for adoption.
Thanks, Kim. Uh, with that, let's start with, do we have any public comment on this item? Stacy?
The City Clerk's Office has not received any public comment for item 12.1, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
Nor do I. Um, whoops, hang on. Turning the sound off on all of you. Um, colleagues, any questions for staff? We went over a lot.
Just, just a wonderful job to, to Stacy and everybody for doing the initial work and and thank you, Kim, for keeping all the numbers straight.
Yeah, I would just remind our folks in the public, as much as we love hearing your comments on lots of the smaller things that we tend to do, this is the biggest thing we do of any time of the year is to spend the money. So I would expect more people to want to weigh on this, but that's okay. Um.
And, and Donald, it's, let's always, just as we always do, let's be sure to thank the voters and the people who are spending money here in Rancho Cordova.
Mm-hmm. Between our two tax measures and this last Congress and President for some special federal funding, which I believe was one of the first times that cities of our size got a direct allocation of anything like this. So yeah, thank you very much. Uh, colleagues, any last thoughts, directions?
I have one last direction. Um, the Folsom Cordova uh School District reached out to me um this last week, and they were hopes that they could put in an ask to try to work on um uh basically uh having a different spread of teachers that would be able to show up at the schools and doing recruitment at HBCUs to try to come into the city and kind of add to it. I had them reach out to Stacy Delaney. Their ask is about 50K. Um, I'd like to actually see if I could stick that in there for this year's budget um for the Measure H uh fund. I think that type of thing, being able to find those types of teachers and be able to integrate them inside the Folsom Cordova Part of School District would be a great uh find for us, as it's, it's called equity in hiring. And so, but they need the, the 50 grand to do the recruitment and to bring the teachers on, and it, and it's been working in other places. Uh, I don't.
So Garrett, can I, can I ask you, because I just want to follow what you're asking for, because you described something at the end that I think makes more sense than what you asked in the beginning. So are you asking for a, a special recruiting program to recruit teachers to Folsom, like, so credential candidates and credentialed teachers from historically black colleges and universities? A recruiting program from those schools to Folsom Cordova?
Correct.
Is that what you just asked?
Yes.
Okay.
That's exactly correct.
So I, I wouldn't have a problem with, with, but I live in a different way. I would be very supportive of that idea. Without understanding what the total costs are, I don't think I'd be comfortable budgeting for it. But that also, I think we had a couple of those that we said, we're not going to fund out of the Community Enhancement Fund, Community Grants this time, but we may have additional funds or capacity at a, at a later time.
We just need to know more information.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I would say, let's not budget for it. Let's ask staff to, to, to research it. Maybe by this fall, we actually have an idea of what that would cost. I mean, the reality is that most recruiting for teachers, for placements, for credentials, or those kinds of things, or student teaching positions, they, you know, those are done for the year. We're really looking at what would it be, 23, 24, right? I guess is what we'd be talking about. We'd talk, we'd be talking about a year from this fall. So we have time to come up with an idea or, or, and what the cost is. Uh, but it sounds pretty interesting.
Excellent. All right.
But, but to just pull out and say, look, we have 50 grand to spend, then somebody comes up with how to spend 50 grand, when if we got the proposal and it's 18,000 for the same thing, like, I would just want to know, give us what it's going to be and what it's going to be, instead of here's how much money, then they figure out how to spend that much money.
Right. It's, they approached me with the, the ask, because they put together the program, and they were wondering if they could slip it in. But um, I don't think I have enough time to actually get it in front of people, but I know.
Well, and you're also, and in the case of, of a school district, I would just say that as somebody who serves on all of these two by twos, one of the things we've been trying to be very, um, we've tried to honor the wishes of the superintendents and the priorities of the superintendents in the school districts in general. And for something that's at a district level, that doesn't have the prioritat, prioritization ranking of the superintendent, I'd be very reluctant to just bless that here without it coming back and, and the superintendent actually saying that, yes, we want to implement this, this out is going to work. I've assigned my deputy superintendent, whoever's going to work on this thing, and I'm committing to doing it. Because we've had those issues where we, we've decided we wanted to spend something, and then it fell because it wasn't something the district was ready to execute on. So.
If it was the school board and the superintendent were to come before they come back, could I get it in?
I don't, I don't.
Logically, it needs to be a communication between the superintendent and the city manager.
Yeah, and, and, and I would say, I don't think it needs the superintendent and the school board coming back to a council meeting. I think it's something we can say we're open to the idea. Let Stacy and Cyrus and everybody go do the research and come back and say, okay, we can, this is what it looks like. And the superintendent's bought off on it. But if the superintendent comes back and goes, I don't have the HR and recruiting capacity to do this without it being five more people. I like, I, I just, and I'm just making that up. But without knowing that better, and I mean, you know, it's, it's June, we have the summer and probably the early fall to figure out what that looks like and how much it costs to do it. But if you look at the demographics of our community and the demographics of our, of our students, um, and, and frankly, maybe even the lack of diversity in some of our teaching, you know, staffs across the region, not, not just saying anyone's school district. I don't see why this isn't something we'd be, we'd, we'd want to embrace, but there's a lot, there's a lot there to do, and nobody on this Zoom or in this meeting is the expert on what you're asking for. So I think we need to get the recommendations from them and pricing from them, and then figure out if it's something that they will execute if we were able to fund it.
Okay.
Does that sound good? Linda, I think you are nodding your head too, and we were talking about it, and David, I don't know if you want to weigh in.
And, and, and I have to tell you, you know, having been a part of several graduations at Cordova now, I mean, we have a phenomenally diverse, just at Cordova, phenomenally diverse student body. Significant number of Hispanics and neither one of you have been to the, have been to leadership and heard the um evolution of cultures in Rancho Cordova, but um whereas, you know, five and six years ago, the Asians had been superseded by the um kids from the Slavi, uh, former Soviet Union countries. Today, it's Hispanics that are the primary cultural group in, in Rancho Cordova. And now they're being joined by a huge number of kids from um the Middle East. So that's why it's important that it come from the district. We could focus on one group or another. But perhaps this needs to be a more, this needs to be a broader effort than just one culture or another.
I, my only comment to that, Linda, and I wouldn't necessarily disagree with what you said, is that a specific recruiting effort with historically black colleges, unfortunately, there aren't other colleges like that representing those other uh communities um that you, that you're describing, although.
And I would agree, but also are there any historically black colleges in California?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Right.
Sorry.
Yeah, I, I don't know them well, but I'm pretty sure I don't remember one around here. Um, well, I, I, I think, David, I don't know if you want to weigh in, I, I, I'm open to us at least exploring it, just not putting the price.
Yes, but we def, it definitely needs to come from the district.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Okay, okay. Um, other questions, directions for staff, anything else to give here? Um, this is.
This is receive and file for the next time to come back on the 20th.
Okay. So, Kim, Cyrus, you got what you need?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to uh to take this opportunity to thank staff for their work. This has been many, many months in the works, as uh Vice Mayor Budge mentioned. And also just a reminder that we have now taken all the final input from the council, and this will be on consent at the next meeting for the final adoption.
Thank you very much. And, and I would just say, thank you, colleagues. That wasn't easy when we are I, I know we've had, you know, multiple tax measures, and we've had federal funds and all kinds of things to try to figure out to do, and I think a lot of us were sweating, sweating whether or not we would get to this day and be done. So congratulations and thank you.
And thank you.
Staff and everyone else for, for getting us here and all of the great uh research and work that's gone into this, so.
And thank you, community, for their hard work and perseverance.
Thank you, Linda. Uh, okay, so with that, we'll move on to item 12.2. Uh, I believe this is part of what we just discussed. Um, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for professional services with ShotSpotter. And.
We have Chief.
Oh, Chief Luke, you're going to do it. Go ahead. Sorry. I was ready to call on you, Cyrus.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Terry, council members. Um, we're here to discuss the.
He can be up as tall as you are, Stacy.
Thank you. We're here to discuss ShotSpotter and our support of its accuracy for um gun violence reduction. Um, with me, I have Sergeant Amar Gandhi, who is a investigative sergeant with the Sheriff's Gang Suppression Unit, who responds to ShotSpotter activations along with doing follow-up investigations for ShotSpotter. Um, also with me is um Terry Green, who's a director with ShotSpotter, along with Ron Teachman, who should be online. Ron is a retired police chief with South Bend with um excess of 30 years, um to provide more detail on the system. And with that being said, I'll allow Sergeant Gandhi to provide a PowerPoint presentation for you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Uh, I'll try to give a general overview. Uh, like I said, my name's Amar Gandhi. I'm with the sheriff's office here in Sacramento. We've, uh, recently taken over investigative, uh, responsibilities for ShotSpotter effective this January and have seen tremendous results, uh, to go into. Maybe. There we go. Uh, specifically for Rancho Cordova, uh, the firearms calls for service. If you'll take a look at the general area, uh, there's 1,242 calls for service between shots fired and threats with a gun. Uh, and you can see the neighborhood breakdowns as far as when the heat map goes between White Rock, Cordova Meadows and Brookside. It'll also virtually mirror the gun-related reports between homicides, assaults with a deadly weapons involving a firearm and other shootings at inhabited dwellings and vehicles. Uh, 118 total reports, uh, were taken between January of 2019 and November of '21. Now, since, uh, taking over investigative responsibilities for ShotSpotter, uh, and now I'm speaking on the county side of it, we've taken 315 ShotSpotter activation calls. The biggest stat to take away from here, over 80% of ShotSpotter calls were not reported. Uh, that means no one called 911, no one alerted authorities, no one said anything to anyone. Uh, and this year, we're actually, year to date through yesterday, we're hovering in that 85% um, area. Of these investigations have resulted in 51 felony arrests, over 100 firearms seized that were all illegally fired. Of those firearms seized, 42 were reported stolen. I don't have the exact numbers of ghost guns, but a significant amount of those were also, um, unserialized ghost guns that were taken from these calls. Going into the, if you wanted to get into more of the raw data of it, uh, again, 315 calls in the first quarter of this year, only 12% of those calls were reported 911. Uh, the biggest benefit of this technology is they are the eyes and ears, uh, in these zones where we have none. Um, whether residents are not calling out of fear or for other reasons, we're just not getting those calls to respond to and help these areas. Uh, and ShotSpotter has made this, uh, it's been a huge asset for.
Can I ask a quick question only because I'm, I'm going off of my phone here. Trying to find the staff report. Um, you, you're, so this is a proposal for a new program, yet you're reporting year-to-date data. And I think there was a map previously of the city. So is this, are we operating ShotSpotter already within the city? Or are you giving us stats from the, uh, Unincorporated County that the sheriff's department has collected?
So I'm sorry, I guess I kind of glossed over that part.
No, uh, and you might've said it, I missed it, so.
No, so the, the first two, I'll go back to these. These are specific to Rancho Cordova and this is where, uh, the data was shown and used for the actual ShotSpotter deployment. The second series of data that I'm showing is, uh, on the county side of it, within the county of Sacramento, uh, the technology is not currently used in the city of Rancho Cordova. But it is being used within the city of Sacramento and unincorporated parts of Sacramento County.
Okay. So just, if you go back one slide, I just want to make sure that, that I and the public are aware of what you're talking about. These were gun-related either reports or calls for service within the city, but we don't have ShotSpotter here yet. And then everything that you're explaining after these slides are the experience of the sheriff's department in, uh, the Unincorporated County and the city of Sacramento's police department data.
Correct. And, and something to highlight from this, these 118 reports were again called in and reported. So this is only the, theoretically, the tip of the iceberg of what's actually going on in these neighborhoods. And that's evidenced by, correct, in, in these stats here.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I just, I want to make sure that I was on the same page with everybody.
Sure.
Uh, Donald, let's, uh, I'm going to follow up and, and turn it over. So, um, that 118 reports then represents the 20 or 15% of, uh, potential shots that got reported in Rancho Cordova.
Correct. If you go by the numbers, this represents 15 to 20% of what's actually occurring right now.
Okay, got it. And I would be interested in knowing, you use the term Brookside. What do you, whether it's the county or the city, define as Brookside?
Um, that I would probably defer to Chief Luke as far as the, uh, in the neighborhood breakdown of it.
Vice Mayor Budge, I would have to look back more of a specific map to give you a breakdown of all the areas within Brookside.
Okay. And, and I, I understand you're, you.
If you, if you give me a moment.
You haven't been around here that long.
If you give me a moment, I can give you a more detailed.
Yeah. I'd really, I mean, we all know White Rock, South White Rock Meadows, Lincoln Village, but I'd really be interested in knowing what you call Brookside.
Okay.
The only I can think of would be the, the restaurant over there called, is it still called Brookside?
No, it's, it's Rascals. I mean, well, I don't know what it's called now, but that's, and that's Riviera East and that's actually outside of the, uh.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm looking south of, well, what am I looking at on that? No, uh, no, 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 I take it back. No, that's, uh, that's Lincoln Village. That's, it's, it's, and I'm looking at there on this map. Yeah.
Yeah, Donald, but, but, but you're correct. If, um, that straight line that goes down to Walsh Station, that's Bradshaw. Walsh Station is the intersection of Bradshaw and Jackson Road.
Yeah. And you don't see dots right where I would consider what Brookside could be.
Only the one, yeah, only the one north of 50 would be, uh, at the restaurant. And, um, that's really Riviera East. Yeah.
Okay. Well, if you could clarify that by the, at the presentation, it'd be great.
Just a little definition.
I could just interject one thing, um, between these two. These are showing two different sets of data. The firearms call for service only count for the shots fired and threats with a gun. So that's what this heat map shows. Um, it's not actual dots because there are so many of them that it's hard to do. Um, versus the heat map will show, if you look at the red area, it's a higher concentration. Versus this slide right here are actually gun-related reports, um, related to homicides, the assaults with a deadly weapon and actual shootings of inhabited dwellings. And those were easier to illustrate with the dots, if that makes sense.
Got it.
I mean, it, it looks like it's contrary between Cordova Meadows, uh, turn, what, what the other one that they described as one of them. And then even that could be Sun River is up into the north, northern part of the city. But that's kind of where the, the congregation's.
No, actually, nothing, nothing in Sun River. It's more Rossmore Ambassador.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Sun River is going to be to the east of that la- that last gray line I see going north-south. Yeah, you're right.
That's Benita or something.
Yeah. Okay. But we're talking ShotSpotter. So now go ahead and talk about comparing it to what we don't have.
Right. So again, ShotSpotter is a shot detection technology that assists us. Um, crimes, it'll, it will help detect shootings of a person, drive-by shootings, shooting into a dwelling or a vehicle. A lot of times it's simply a negligent discharge of a firearm, uh, which will lead to illegal weapons possession and stolen weapons. Um, I know people will sometimes overlook the negligent discharge of a firearm. It is still actually a felony that the district attorney will file a strike against. Um, so it is a very serious crime and, and I know it sounds cliche to say what goes up must come down. But these, uh, negligent gunshots in the air are not harmless. They can cause irreparable harm to, you know, people and property. Uh, the aftereffects of it are with the Niibin and IBIS, uh, the stuff is the, and I laugh and joke about this a little bit. The stuff we used to joke about, oh, this is the only stuff you see on TV, on CSI Miami and things like that, where, you know, you pick up a bullet shell and then the guy pulls out his sunglasses and, you know, an hour later, we have the shooter. Well, stuff like this is actually now happening, uh, in real time, in real life. We're getting these shell casings, we're getting these firearms recovered. And in as quick as two to four hours, we're getting matches from other jurisdictions throughout the country. We've gotten hits, um, you know, as close as within Sacramento and the Bay Area. But there are implications where the guns are being passed around from person to person throughout the state and across state lines. Um, we're getting good prosecutions, these, but again, it all stems from these crimes that don't normally go reported where we're having the opportunity to investigate. If that makes sense.
Absolutely. It's like sharing DNA. It's the DNA of a gun.
It's very, it's a great parallel. It's a fantastic.
Can I ask, so you're saying it's the DNA of the sound of a gun? So the, the, you can hear the gun comparatively to a different kind of gun?
Yes. Actually, the, this technology is that good. It can get you to the different caliber. It can actually tell you the, if there's multiple shooters or one shooter. Uh, I've used it firsthand, our team uses it firsthand. All of our patrol personnel actually has it on their department phones and use it daily. Uh, this next slide right here is just a little, uh, snapshot or screenshot, rather, from the actual app that all of the officers and deputies have and use. Uh, obviously not within the city of Rancho Cordova yet, but on the county side and within the city of Sacramento. Um, initially, when a shot is fired, whether it's a single shot or multiple shots, um, that will instantly get, um, input into the ShotSpotter call center. From there, it's reviewed and then shared with us. Now, it sounds like a painstakingly long process, but we're talking seconds. Um, from where they will tell you, ShotSpotter, that they will have the activation to our phones within 60 seconds. And please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong on any of that. But in our experience, the time is usually less than 30 seconds. I've firsthand seen it in less than 10 seconds from when a shot is fired to the activation on the phone. So faster than a dispatcher can even send an officer, the officer will have the alert of a pretty precise location within 82 feet. And it's not giving you an exact address, it's telling you exactly where it was fired. For instance, if you look at this slide, um, it looks like it centers between two homes. Now, it does have an 82-foot radius, but it'll give you an idea. If it's fired in a backyard, you'll have a general idea if it was fired in a backyard. Um, if it's fired on the side of a freeway, you'll know. It won't give you an address, it'll give you the exact location, uh, which is great for us. Um, like we were talking about, you get this, uh, multiple round activation. We can actually tell if there's a direction of travel that the shooter's going. So if it is someone who is in a car, we can get an idea accompanying that with other technology. We can sometimes identify the car fairly quickly and, which leads to a suspect. Uh, it'll tell us the caliber. We can find out sometimes if it, you know, whether it's a rifle, a 40-cal, 22, whatever it might be. And yes, please let me defer to Terry.
Hey, so thank you for having us here. Uh, so the, uh, the service level agreement is for 60 seconds or less and it's done with our sensors as well as our human element, which we call it an incident review center. And so there are humans that are actually verifying what the technology has determined as gunfire. Um, 60 seconds again is our service level agreement, but oftentimes it's less. And with Sacramento, as, um, as the sergeant said, said, it's been around 30 seconds or less and sometimes even 10 seconds. It's amazing. Uh, so the 82 feet is, again, that's part of our perimeter of, um, that, that guarantee. Oftentimes I've heard patrol officers arriving and seeing that there were shell casings at their feet where we told them the gunfire occurred. So we just have a guarantee and then what's reality? And we, we rely on the feedback from our agencies. On, on with me, I have Ron Teachman. He's a former chief. If Ron has anything to state here that I missed, please, please interject.
Can I really quickly ask, uh, whoever that was that was speaking, if you want to introduce yourself and who you're with?
I'm sorry, I'm with ShotSpotter. I'm the Western Regional Director. My name is Terry Green.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, one big takeaway to realize, officers are investigating an illegal shooting. I know it seems like a simple concept enough, but the ShotSpotter deployment are only in areas where it is illegal to fire a gun. Okay? It is not going to be fired in remote areas of the Delta where you are allowed to have that on your property or, you know, things like that. These are all illegal shootings that our officers will be responding to. Um, like we were talking about, it is a very specific location of where that illegal shooting occurred. It is not based on, um, a neighbor or a resident, you know, thinking they might've heard a sound that resembles a gunshot. It is scientific data leading us to believe with over a 99% accuracy rate that gunshots were fired in a specific location, uh, from a, from an actual firearm. So it, it just enhances everything from a patrol response to the investigative side. Now, we kept that brief, uh, assuming you would have several questions for either myself or the ShotSpotter reps. Um, like I said, I can very much tell you on our side of it and as far as the deployment and the response goes, um, and any of the technical questions that you may have, uh, happily defer over to the ShotSpotter folks that are here.
Um, council, let's start, if you have any questions, let's stay away from any directions for staff or any kind of pontificating on our positions. But if we have specific questions, or the presenters, and then after that, we can go to, um, comments from the public.
So let's just make sure, uh, that we understood the last slide. Um, so the point is, as somebody pointed out earlier, early on, um, um, fireworks, car backfires, et cetera, are sometimes reported as shots fired. But in reality, the ShotSpotter technology has the ability to sift out all that stuff.
Correct. It will actually scientifically discern fireworks, uh, the sound pattern of a firework to an actual gunshot and varying calibers.
Got it. So, uh, bottom line is people should not be afraid to report it. But unless the ShotSpotter technology says it's your quote-unquote illegal shooting, then somebody is not going to waste their time going out there.
Well, and that's where I'll actually, um, differ from that. Well, we will respond. If you call about shots being fired, whether ShotSpotter tells us it's a shot or you think it's a shot, officers are going to go out and look. Uh, we're going to ensure public safety over anything else first. Now, the ShotSpotter's big advantage is going to be, like we were talking about before, what's beneath the tip of the iceberg? What's beneath the actual call for service that's not getting called? That's where the big strength is going to come. Now, you know, can it help? Of course it can help and be remiss to say that it wouldn't. However, it will not be the sole determining factor for a, for an officer not to respond because a neighbor called about, uh, whether it was a fireworks or, you know, if they were unsure. An officer's going to come out to make sure.
Other questions for staff?
Uh, what's the average of false alarms with ShotSpotter? Would you say?
It's under one, it's under a 0.5%. I have Ron Teachman on the line and I believe he has to, um, raise his hand to add, to address the question.
Actually, Tara, I've been, I've, I've been invited to join the panel, so I can jump in and I will.
Thank you.
Um, so we get great feedback from our customers. We're very receptive and responsive to the feedback, whether we missed an incident, whether we, uh, sent them on a false positive. And believe me, having been in law enforcement 38 years, eight of those years as a chief, uh, law enforcement officers are very quick to give you feedback, uh, and to help you improve your service. And as Terry just noted, we had an outside auditing firm, uh, look at the data and our false positive rate across our customer base for the last two years was 0.5%. And our comprehensive notification came to 97%. We've contractually guaranteed 90% of external unsuppressed gunfire. We exceeded that, promised low and deliver high, a 97% rate over the last two years across our customer base. And if you want, I can get into more detail of how we can discern gunfire from other things that go bang, boom, went pop, and I'm happy and prepared to do that. But I want to be pithy in the interest of time.
I'm good.
Uh, Gary, were there any more questions or David, do you have anything?
I would just like to add that this is a common concern among residents. There's a lot of confusion about fireworks and gunshots. And a lot of residents who make the assumption that every firework is a gunshot or something like that. And you see that all over social media. So I think there would be an advantage here actually to educating those residents a little bit about what actually was a shot and what was, what was just the, basically every night fireworks that we, we hear in Rancho Cordova are certainly entering that season again now. My second comment would be. My second comment would be, uh, you know, I'm a real fan of technology in law enforcement and it's been in my view, sort of a shame that we haven't been able to do things like speed cameras perhaps to uh, to control speeding where we could never afford to deploy an officer twenty-four seven, but boy, you could make a real dent with uh, with the camera that sort of forced everyone to slow down in a given location. We haven't been able to do that because of state law in California, but this is technology that is, is available to us. And frankly, I do not see a downside at this point. So I'm really excited to see what the, what the outcome of this will be. And I want to thank you, Chief, for bringing it to us.
Um, let's see, before we get too far, uh, Stacy, do we have any public comments on this?
Yes, we have uh, one speaker card that I've received from Darryl Langwell.
We'll go ahead and take that. Darryl, you'll have three minutes.
Darryl is going to come forward to the podium.
Uh, Darryl Langwell Vineyards Neighborhood. And I'm just kind of curious, um, in construction, a lot of times uh, you will use a twenty-two caliber discharge to drive a nail into cement. And I'm just kind of curious, will this register those?
I'll take that. Uh, in our service level agreement to our customers, we promise notification over twenty-five caliber because generally, and I'll get a little deep here, the twenty-twos don't emanate enough acoustic volume to reach our sensors. We need at least three sensors participating in a multi gunshot incident or four in a single gunshot incident to get the location accuracy. The reason why I say that is when sensors are engaged, we timestamp to the millisecond. That's how we can determine the location. Uh, that Detective Sergeant Amar spoke to earlier with, with great accuracy. The time differential allows us to mathematically calculate where the sound came from. And we need that level of sensor participation. While I'm on that point, the way we can discern gunfire from nail guns and other noises is gunfire tends to be very linear or directional, where fireworks, backfire, jackhammers and nail guns tend to give out an omnidirectional acoustic uh radius. And while the artificial uh intelligence algorithms dismiss most of that noise, it's our experts in the real time crime center that are responsible for the actual dispatch. They listen to the audio recording, they look for the waveform configuration, the acoustic signature and gunfire is unique. But most tellingly, they look at the monitor in front of them that has all the sensors located that we've deployed. And they see which senses were engaged. And if they see an omnidirectional or circular participation, they dismiss it. If they see it's linear, then they notify law enforcement that it's gunfire. So they go a series of steps after several weeks of training. And that's why we're so accurate and that's why we can tell it is zero point five percent false positive rate. So thank you for that question.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, do we have any other public comments?
The city clerk's office has not received any additional public comment and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
And I did not see any in Zoom either. And in full disclosure, it sounded like Chief Teachman was from South Bend. Uh, we did not coordinate my Notre Dame shirt here today. He had no idea I was going to wear this, so. We're all.
And if I may, Mayor, in full transparency, I'm still here in Reno. I just left the US Conference of Mayors. And I don't mean to pander, but I congratulate you for taking the time to attend the conference because there was a lot of great strategies, best practices, innovations that I heard over the last three days. And I'm glad you're bringing some of those back to Rancho Cordoba as well.
Well, and if you didn't miss, I'm still in Reno in my hotel room, so I haven't left either. That makes two of us if you're still here. Uh, but no, I, I, I will just say that um uh, Mayor Suarez, who is the, I guess, outgoing president and uh, of the US Conference of Mayors and the mayor of Miami, uh, sung the praises of ShotSpotter yesterday morning. Um, about it and even a disagreement that he had with his chief of police at the time and the fact that that chief of police came back to him afterwards and said that uh, that he was wrong and that the mayor was right. Um, so I'm, I'm very much looking forward to seeing how this works. Um, and seeing if it's something that can reduce crime and fatalities and, and, you know, I, I think, David, you point out, I, I think a very timely thing around this time of year that we get a lot of reports of what we think are gunfire and it being fireworks. I also say that um I would love to see that, that dot pattern again in some ways or even, or somehow if there was a way to cross-reference um, where people live to where their reports are on uh, Nextdoor. And the fact that how many of them live, live near the highway and it's not a firework, it's not a gun, it's a car backfire in Highway fifty. Um, and so if there's any way to even cut down on that amount of work, I think, I think this is, this is worth the time and the effort. Um, to do it, but yeah, there's been the, this conference, I would say, unlike a lot of the ones in the past, has really focused on not just ShotSpotter, there are a couple other vendors here that were doing other things in this space in different ways. So um, it's definitely something that has evolved. And I would even say that I hadn't heard anyone say that they could identify and compare that, you know, the same gun in three different instances. So I hadn't even heard that. And so the fact that you could even go and say, this is the same three fifty, three fifty-seven used in three different places in the city. Um, and relatively this is probably the same gun um, is, could be a massive amount of help for us.
Donald, it's no wonder. I mean, just what's happened on the last weekend, it's been all over at least two cable news channels.
Yeah, although uh, we would assume we knew who that was and what they were using within an hour or two of everything happening, right? In, in this case, we're talking about things that, you know, happened at two AM and somebody shoots at somebody or out of a window or whatever. Um, and we've had some residences that just go back to bed and they, ah, it's just a firework when it really wasn't. And so I think that, you know, the value of this, I think is huge. And so, um, or at least the upside of it. I, again, I know there, I, I have heard some criticism in the community, even, even this weekend while I've been here um, at the conference. Um, so not everybody, it's not universally, you know, loved program, but at the same time, if it saves lives and helps us, you know, solve crimes, great. So that's my two cents. So let me bring this back to my colleagues. This is um up for a motion if somebody wants to make it.
Yeah, we need a motion to move approval of the resolution, um, which I assume is also two thousand twenty-two dash.
Yep. So I have a motion by Budge. Do I have a second? Garrett, David? Anybody, anyone?
Is David here? All right. Hi. Second.
Okay, second. An eyes of vote. Okay, with that, we will take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Sander.
Hang on, David, you there?
I think he fell off.
He's still here, but did he walk away? I'd really not like this to be a three-one vote. So let's take uh, two minutes. David on the line, give it.
So I can ask a question in the meantime?
Absolutely.
Okay, of Ron, of somebody, this is, this is, um, since we have time to be in the weeds. Um, you said, um, uh, because of the, because of the decibels, it registers over um, twenty-five caliber. And, and for those of us who don't know a lot about guns, except what we see in blue bloods, um, a twenty-two is a basic rifle like you use for target shooting, but you could probably kill somebody with one, obviously. So I don't suspect anybody's going around shooting somebody else with a twenty-two, but if there were a shot discharged from a twenty-two, you wouldn't necessarily pick it up.
So the, we're, we're talking handguns, very low caliber, small handgun. And the issue is the smaller caliber, less gunpowder, not as loud of a bang. We may often hear it. We may get one or two sensors located near the event, so we'll have a recording of it. We only promised the customer notification if we don't only detect, we need to locate. And the location requires three or four or more sensor participating, so we can actually, actually triangulate or more correctly multilaterate the time differential. And that's why the caliber is an issue.
This is like somebody, this is like somebody locating, uh, triangulating and locating somebody based on cell tower. Uh, pinpointing of, of location.
That's a great analogy. And I often refer to cell tower as far as the installation, which we often co-locate with the small cells on rooftops of buildings for our equipment, just like your cellphone provider. Besides the towers out in the fields, they put many of their devices on rooftops of buildings. So that's a great analogy.
Okay, and nine millimeter is the Glock that everybody's been talking about the last week or so.
Uh, there've been a number of firearms making the media attention. A lot of that's been the assault rifles, the RF fifteens. And the mass shootings, and that's what we've seen tragically across our country.
Yeah.
I think I looked at a count today, there've been over twenty-five to thirty mass shootings, and that's four more people injured in one incident since Uvalde. And that's.
Yes. Just this past three days.
And that's like twelve days, yeah.
All over everywhere.
Mayor Terry referred to President Suarez and with a great deal of emotion spoke at the podium at this conference. As he's talking, he's getting inbounds on his phone about Philadelphia and Chattanooga.
Yeah.
And every time he came back to the podium.
It's a donut, bacon.
Yeah.
Like this, most people never, nobody ever heard of Uvalde, Texas before this.
Nobody's going to forget it either.
No.
No. Dan, are you back with us?
Yes, I lost, sorry, Ms. Mar, I lost audio there for a little bit, but I'm here.
Not a problem. Okay, um, we were in the midst of a roll call. And I'm going to take it back. That's okay. We'll take it back to her city clerk because she had some eyes but didn't finish. So let's go there.
So we had a motion by Budge and a second by Gatewood, uh, starting with the roll call. Councilmember Gatewood.
Hi.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Hi. Well, thank you, everyone, and good luck to our police department in implementing this. I think a lot of us would love for you to get this up and running by July first. What's going on for, for Fourth of July, but uh, go on and be prosperous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Wonderful to have such great experts, Cyrus. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Recording in progress.
Okay, so let's move on to council requests for future agenda items.
So I have a question. David, are you on the line?
I am.
Okay, so I'm really concerned about what's going on with Secog and how they're, how they're dealing with us in the community.
So Garrett, Garrett, before getting really into the weeds, you, what you want to say is a topic that you'd like to discuss, and then that would be the topic we would discuss in a future agenda. Okay.
Yeah, I was going to stop there. I was going to be like.
Okay.
Uh, you ruined it. I had.
I want to make sure we're not getting too far into talking about policy.
I was just, was just getting there. I was like, I, I'm very concerned about how Secog is treating um, some of the initiatives that they put through, and I'd like to discuss it as a group.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I'm willing to do that as well. Is there a third for that?
I, I don't think that's a, a problem at all. Uh,
Okay.
I frankly don't know how long it's been since Secog has come and spoken to us, uh, but I, I wouldn't say we need to wait for that. Um, I think that sort of, uh, that sort of discussion could be healthy. We've had uh, some controversy about Citizens Initiative. You guys may have seen something written up at the B about it. Uh, whether or not it would endanger federal funding or to be implemented by voters. People tend to agree that if we're looking for that next measure A under STA, we need something like this Citizens Initiative because it could pass at a, a fifty percent rate, sort of a two-thirds rate, the way an STA measure A would pass. We, we all know there's transportation funding shortages and this is, uh, this is probably the best most recent opportunity to pursue that. So uh, but there has been some controversy at Secog about what's in that initiative and how it might impact the six county region. So I think, Garrett, I think that's where you're going with this, right?
Yep, that's exactly.
Yeah. The only guidance I would give, the only feedback or guidance I would give to, to this council is um, and I've already asked staff to weigh in on some of this. And again, I don't want to get in the weeds on the policy or the vote of this. Um, but regardless of what happens with the Citizen Initiative, supposedly there may be some sort of advice or amendments that could come to STA that I still don't really understand how or why that would take place in general, but um, a conversation in general around Secog, I think, would be fine. Well, hang on, hang on, hang on. From a timeliness standpoint of what David just referred to that was in the B, that's a matter of weeks and it's probably nothing that we could get onto the agenda in time. Um, so just be aware of that, that there, there, there are certain things that were just described that within time windows are, are days if not a matter of weeks before it'll be over.
The agenda item is to ask Secog to come make a presentation.
Is that what you wanted?
No.
Garrett, or, or did you want, do you want to talk about a policy position of the city?
I'd like to talk about policy position and, and having our own transport planning authority. So that.
It doesn't work, Garrett.
Well, uh, that, that's what I'm trying to say. I, I wouldn't necessarily like, there's, there's a myopic thing about the Citizen Initiative, a measure A, how that might work and how the city may be impacted by that.
Right.
That's probably nothing we're going to fit, we're going to flesh out before there's even a, a conversation at the city council meeting. The further thing that you just discussed, I think is something that maybe work with staff to fit, to define what that workshop looks like. And then we can figure out if we can, how we fit that in and, and who would be invited to, to a conversation.
So Garrett, that would be like, uh, that would be like the Transportation Commission. They have an Eldorado or Plaster County.
Yeah. So let's just ask James Corliss to come and make a presentation to the city council.
Yeah, I, I. Want something beyond that, so I, I think there's some.
I just want to discuss it and I think we're discussing it right now and I
Yep.
I think, I feel that it's, it sounds like we have some discussion to have.
Yeah, so that, that's. Um, and I know I've asked specific questions about how, how this affects STA and that, that'll have to happen during their meetings. Um, any other requests for future agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we will uh, adjourn to closed session and we will adjourn tonight in the memory of Alice Talbot. Uh, is it Louis or Louise? It's Louis Hawks, right?
Lois.
Lois, excuse me, Hawks. Um, the children of Uvalde and I would also say the multitude of victims and, and people that have been injured and to their families um, in the last thirteen or fourteen days in mass shootings across this country.
Absolutely.
With that, we will adjourn into closed session and uh, we'll be back to report out of closed session. Um, at total point tonight. Thank you, everyone.